Good evening. Welcome to the June 18th meeting of Troy City Council. I'm Marty Baker, President of Council. Please silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. Mr. Tom Kendall will begin with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Dear and loyal Father, please be with us this evening as we discuss business of the city. Be with our first responders who protect us on a day-to-day basis. Be with those who cannot be with their families and are overseas, protecting the American way. And finally, be with our citizens of our community, Troy, that they may do good and help others and be a significant part of our community. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Here.
Mr. Twiss?
Here.
Mr. Severt?
Here.
Mr. Kendall?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Schwizer?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mr. Tewilliger. Mrs. Oda.
Motion to excuse Mr. Tewilliger.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to excuse Mr. Tewilliger. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Tewilliger is excused.
Motion to excuse Mrs. Oda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Twiss to excuse Mrs. Oda. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda is excused.
Tonight, we have a presentation from Megan Marhelsky, a geologist with the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency regarding the City of Troy Wellhead Protection Plan. Ms. Marhelsky?
My name is Megan Marhelsky, and I'm a geologist with the Source Water Protection Program at the Ohio EPA. The Source Water Protection Program is designed to help our public water systems, like Troy, protect the source of their drinking water from contamination. Sources of drinking water include groundwater and surface water. For the city of Troy, the source of drinking water is groundwater, which is pumped from the ground using 10 production wells in two separate wellfields. Troy is one of 165 communities in southwestern Ohio that obtain their drinking water from groundwater. Source water protection is a combined effort. It requires both the Ohio EPA and the public water systems to work together. Source water protection can be a daunting task and is unfortunately always not a priority for our public water systems. Like most things, we don't always understand the value of our drinking water source until it is no longer safe to drink or is depleted. Tonight, the Ohio EPA would like to recognize the city of Troy for doing an amazing job of protecting its valuable groundwater resources. As part of our recognition, we are presenting Mayor Beamish with two certificates tonight. One certificate is for Troy's Outstanding Drinking Water Source Protection Plan, and the other is for the city's exceptional implementation of the protection plan. Before I present this certificate, I would like to mention a few things about Troy's protection program. The city of Troy has been actively involved in source water protection since 1984. Over the years, the city has been involved in numerous groundwater investigations and protective activities to protect its source of drinking water. Troy's original source water protection plan was endorsed by the Ohio EPA in 2000. Source water protection plans are dynamic documents which should be updated as wellfield operations and potential contaminant sources change. Troy understands this and recently updated their protection plan. The update to the protection plan far exceeded our minimum requirements, and we easily endorsed the updated plan. Unfortunately, a protection plan alone is not enough to protect the source of your drinking water. The protective strategies in the plan need to be implemented and evaluated and tweaked when necessary. This is the reason for the second certificate tonight. Of the 165 communities in southwestern Ohio with groundwater as a source of drinking water, less than half are actively protecting their source of drinking water, and only nine are doing an exceptional job. Troy is one of only nine groundwater communities in southwestern Ohio doing an exceptional job of implementing their protection plan. I would like to personally recognize Troy Superintendent Jeff Monz, who I believe has attributed to this great accomplishment. Jeff has and continues to do a great service to the community of Troy. Mayor and council, thank you for making source water protection a priority and for providing the necessary support to the water treatment staff so they can continue to provide safe, clean drinking water to the city of Troy. It is an honor to be here tonight to present the protection plan endorsement certificate and exceptional implementation certificate to you.
Thank you, Megan. At this time, I would also like everybody to see Jeff Monz. If you'll come forward, Ralph Walters. Both individuals are key ingredients to maintaining a good water stream. And as we talked earlier, you can come to the water treatment plant any day of the week, and you can have a picnic off the floor. That's how clean these two make it. And on behalf of all the council and all the citizens, we accept the honor and thank you for coming and sharing that with us. And Jeff, Ralph, why don't you accept the awards on our behalf and our team?
That is for your plan. Congratulations, Jeff. Great job.
Thank you.
And this is for the exceptional implementation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is a public hearing.
Ordinance number 026-2018, ordinance changing the zoning of 8.015 acres, part of in lot 9891, in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R3B Single Family Residential District to the zoning of AR Agricultural Residential District and repealing ordinance number 09-2018.
I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak against the ordinance? I declare the public hearing closed. Mrs. Knight, please read a summary of the minutes of the June 4th, 2018 meeting.
Minutes of Council, June 4, 2018. There was a presentation of the Look Who Is Recycling Quarterly Award Program. There was a public hearing on ordinance number 023-2018, a rezoning. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to accept Final Platte Section 4 Halifax Estates subdivision. Law and ordinance committee reported regarding the Torte Donut and Donut Jam events and recommended that legislation be prepared for those events. Ordinance number 022-2018, adopt and implement Chapter 921 of the ordinances regarding small cell facilities and wireless support structures was given second reading. Ordinance number 023-2018, rezoning of land located at 530 Crescent Drive was given public hearing and second reading. Ordinance number 025-2018, Final Platte Halifax Estates, first reading. Ordinance number 026-2018, zoning of 8.015 acres, part of in lot 9891, was given first reading. Ordinance number 027-2018, agreement with Rocket Ship Ford's for Torte Donut, first reading. Ordinance number 023-2018, agreement regarding Donut Jam event was given first reading. Following various comments, council adjourned at 7:38 PM.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Except the minutes read. Just like a...
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Kendall to accept the minutes. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Our first committee report tonight is from the Community and Economic Development Committee and Chairman, Mr. William Twiss.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on June 13th to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that the approximate 2.132 acre parcel located at 530 Crescent Drive be rezoned from OC-1, which is Office Commercial District, to R-7 Multiple Family Residential District. This committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and recommends that council adopt ordinance number O-23-2018 to provide for the rezoning of in lot 7039 located at 530 Crescent Drive from OC-1 to R-7. Respectfully submitted by Tom Kendall, John Schwizer, and myself as Chair William Twiss.
Are there any questions from council members? Thank you, Mr. Twiss. The Finance Committee has the next reports from Chairman, Mr. Tom Kendall.
Thank you, Madam President. On June 13th, this committee met to consider the recommendation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, CIC, to establish the APR at 4.5% instead of 1.5% for the $500,000 loan previously approved to be made to the CIC regarding the Sherwood Shopping Center revitalization. This would be identical to the APR to be paid by the proposed development of the shopping center. The loan will be a pass-through transaction from the CIC to the city of Troy with the interest accruing to the city. The terms are set forth in the detailed report. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to amend Resolution Number R16-2018 to authorize the $500,000 loan to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy with the terms outlined herein and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute documents related to the loan. We also support the emergency legislation so that the loan closing can take place this month. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schwizer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions from council? You may continue, Ms. Kendall.
Okay, thank you. On June 13th, this committee met to review a number of requested changes to Chapter 919 of the Codified Ordinance Regarding Solid Waste Service and to consider authorizing the bidding of the Dime Mill Road operations. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to amend Chapter 919 of the Codified Ordinance of the city of Troy as follows. Amend Section 919.11, Paragraph C to establish the following schedule for the monthly charge for residential refuge collection and recycling. Beginning October 1st, 2018, $17. Beginning October 1st, 2019, $17. Beginning October 1st, 2020, $17. Beginning October 1st, 2021, $17.25. Beginning October 1st, 2022, $17.50. Also to amend Section 919.10 to retaining the curbside collection of yard waste properly bagged in approved compostable material or bundled, but to not require the purchase of special bags that are fee, thus providing residents with an added service and a cost savings. Second is to authorize the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the operation of the Dime Mill Road facility. And third, provide for any further amendments to Chapter 919. And this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Schwizer, Mr. Severt, and myself as Chair.
Are there any questions or comments from council members?
I have some, Madam President.
Mr. Severt?
I just want to clarify a few things with Mr. Friggin and perhaps Mr. Tidderington. Prior to this legislation, was there a system of rate increases for refuse?
We, when council established this, they established annual rate increases going back, I believe, to 2009. So we've had 10 years, we had a 10-year schedule that expires October 1st of this year.
Of systematic rate increases?
Correct.
Okay. So to clarify, because I think there's some confusion, even today I heard some confusion. This is a three-year freeze on rates. There will not be a rate increase for three years?
Correct. Current rate is $17. It would stay at $17 for 36 months.
Okay. And then it'll go up a quarter a month, years four and five on a five-year pro forma?
It'll go up one quarter and stay a quarter for the next 12 months, and then another quarter and stay at $17.50 for the following 12 months.
So five years from now, citizens of Troy will be paying $17.50 for his trash as opposed to $17 today?
Correct.
And prior to that, it went from like $9 to $17 over the last five years?
I don't recall what the beginning rate was.
Because I think there's some confusion that this is a tax or a rate increase, and we're not doing a rate increase, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, this sort of started with a conversation that we had about teabags. Can you explain that aspect a little bit? We are now going to eliminate, because I don't think the press explained that that well as to what a benefit that is. So could you explain that a little bit?
So there are actually several, several things that have been happening coincidentally and together. So council may recall last year, as we were going through the budget process, we mentioned there are several rates that were expiring this year, water, sewer, stormwater, and trash, and that we would be analyzing the fund balances, the long-term capital plans, the operating inflation, et cetera. One of those, again, being trash. So as we were beginning to look at it, you and I spoke with the spring season coming along and people getting into, you know, buying the teabags again. You know, we try to re-educate people on what they can and can't do based on the current program. You and I had a conversation that worked very well to answer the question, what impact would it have on our trash program resources and expenditures if we eliminated the special teabags and perhaps folded that into a single rate? That was one conversation. The other that is actually legislation here tonight was with regards to the Dime Mill Facility, which is funded out of the trash, trash fee. The operating staff, namely the street foreman, came to Jill Rhodes, city engineer, Grant Kerber, the law director, and myself with an idea that if we evolved from the city maintaining that facility with, at the same time, hiring a subcontractor to do the mulching and grinding and instead turn the whole operation over to a private contractor with strict city oversight, that there would be another opportunity or an opportunity to save money. We analyzed that pretty thoroughly. Grant explained what we could and couldn't do, what we should and shouldn't do, and how this program could work if we had the time to put a formal bid together. With, Mr. Friggin and I reduced that down to the pro forma, including those savings, including the abolishment of the teabag program. And that's how we found that we could go 36 months without a rate increase and only a minor increase thereafter to pay for the replacement of at least two, possibly three of our trash trucks. Does that answer your question, sir?
I think. I do have a few more, though, follow-up. Mr. Kendall was quoted in the paper as indicating that he thought that there was a prior privatization of Dime Mill. Have we, have you explored that? Has this failed in the past?
The, the reference was actually to a previous subcontractor that we had hired prior to the current one. We have never privatized the entire operation. The previous contractor was the contractor that we had hired to mulch and grind and maintain the brush area for us. That relate, we parted ways with that, and the current contractor is the one that now maintains that portion. Our staff still maintains the operations. Our staff still does a lot of the work out there, and our street foreman is still the site supervisor.
And we're going to bid that out. So the guy who's out there now may not even be the guy who wins the bid, correct?
That's correct.
That's an open bid?
That's correct.
And we're going to make...
Actually, it'll be a sealed bid.
A sealed bid, okay. And we're going to make sure that it's done at least as effective as it is right now.
Correct.
And two real more quick questions, and I appreciate it, Madam President. I want to make sure that Mr. Friggin, because I've worked with some numbers with you on this, are you comfortable that this is an just a bait-and-switch deal? You're comfortable we can keep these rates low, have no increase for 36 months?
Once it's passed by council, council, we will not change that unless there's a dire necessity, which I don't foresee.
Have you seen a, I think Mr. Lutz alluded to it in a Facebook post, that this was an unprecedented freeze. Do you concur with that?
For three years, that's probably...
Yeah, I think, I think our sewer rate was similar. I'm not sure how many years we were able to freeze it there, but it was similar, but certainly in a general fund situation like this, yes.
May I say, it was only unprecedented from what I did on the research on the trash side.
That's what I meant.
Yeah. I didn't look into other rate increases.
And I guess, and so, and then the last question I have is, so I understand it's only first reading tonight, but we have to pass this, I guess if we're going to stop using, if we're going to start picking up eggs other than teabags, it's fairly important to get this legislation passed because we can't implement that administratively. Is that correct?
Well, that's correct in that we are running out of teabags. And so, resolution on this as quickly as possible means that we don't have to invest in more, and folks can go out and buy the bags wherever they want as long as they're the biodegradable ones.
Thank you for your time. I don't have anything.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from council members?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Heath?
Just to clarify on that, the teabags, this is going to change it so that any brand of biodegradable bags are able to be used?
Correct. The brown ones that, that will completely biodegrade like the ones that we have, yes. And, and there are, my understanding is, well, from what I've seen, there are a variety of different options out there, yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Thank you. Do you have anything further, Mr. Kendall?
No, but thank you, Madam President.
Law and ordinance committee is next. Mr. Schwizer?
Yes, Madam President. We have a rezoning application. An Ohio liquor division of, Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of transfer of the existing C1...
Your liquor, bone?
My hand, that's right here. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has transmitted the notice of transfer of the existing C1 and C2 liquor permits from Action G BMW &amp; Company, entire building, 2001 East Staunton Road, to Troy Food Mart &amp; Company, entire building, 2001 East Staunton Road. Objections must be filed by June 29th, 2018. The police department has advised that there is no basis for objection to the application.
Thank you, Mr. Schwizer. We now open the meeting to citizen comments. At this time, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments related to the agenda items this evening? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address. There is a two-minute time limit at this point in the meeting, and Mr. Grant Kerber is our timekeeper.
Mr. Connor, 1210 South Clay Street. I don't know how many people bought teabags in the past, but I would say with this increase like that of 25 cents and then another 25 cents, Troy's going to be making more money than they did on the teabags.
May I make a clarification, please, sir?
Yes.
There is no increase at all for three years.
Right. I understand that, but when it's initiated and when it starts, and after that five years, I'm sure it's going to be raised again. Nothing has ever stayed stagnant in this town when it comes to money.
I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't...
I would like to see some of this stuff taken away so that citizens don't have so much coming out of their pockets. I mean, five-year plans, 10-year plans, it just doesn't seem to stop here in Troy. I wish you could all be on the level that some of us, if citizens, are financially. Then you would understand where we're coming from and why we complain so much about all these increases all the time. Thank you.
Mr. Connor, can I, I want to address that. I'm sorry, Madam President, but this started out as a 50 cent per month increase when it got proposed by city.
Right.
Okay. It ended up with a three-year freeze and a 25% increase, 25 cent increase the last three years, or two years. I appreciate your comments. I know you're concerned about the citizens, but I can't tell you that we weren't concerned about the citizens as well. Everything that you just said is exactly why this council did what it hopefully will do in the next few minutes, to put a freeze on this and to take away something that was costing, that basically was an inefficient system. It was costing citizens money. Those teabags were more expensive than you could buy at Costco or Sam's Club. So it appeared that there was a way to accomplish everything you just wanted to have done. And I think that it was a move in the right direction by this council if they approved this legislation to do that. And while I understand, you know, everybody, even a $3 a year increase is an increase in revenue and an increase out of your pocket, that's not going to occur for three years, sir.
I realize that.
Okay. I mean, I'm...
And I appreciate that. I appreciate the city and the council and all of you working that hard to do this. I mean, it's a change, and it's a step in the right direction. And I hope that you continue to walk in this same path with bigger feet in the future on some of these raises. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any comments at this point? We'll move on to resolutions then and ask Mrs. Knight to read Resolution R22-2018.
Resolution number R22-2018, a resolution amending Resolution Number R16-2018 approving a loan to the Community Improvement Corporation of Troy, Ohio for the revitalization of Sherwood Shopping Center and declaring an emergency. This actually just amends the interest rate that was in the prior legislation, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Severt to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Are there any questions or comments from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Resolution R. 23, 2018.
Resolution number R. 23, 2018. Resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into a contract for the operation of the city's dye mill road facility. This was reported on this evening, first reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Yeah, I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
We'll move on to ordinances and ask Mrs. Knight to read Ordinance O. 22, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 22, 2018. An ordinance adopting and implementing Chapter 921 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, and amending Section 903 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, to add and implement subsection 903.27 regarding small cell facilities and wireless support structures and declaring an emergency. This is the third reading.
Are there any comments or questions from council?
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Lutz to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 23, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 23, 2018. Ordinance changing the zoning of parcel number DO-8058770, in lot number 7039, located at 530 Crescent Drive in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of OC1, Office Commercial District, to the zoning of R7, Multiple Family Residential District. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This would be the third reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
I'll move for adoption on that.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Twist to adopt the ordinance. Is there a further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 25, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 25, 2018. Ordinance accepting the final plat of Halifax Estates Subdivision, Section 4, in the city of Troy, Ohio, and dedicating right away. This is also recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. It is the second reading.
Are there any questions from council?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Phillips and seconded by Mr. Kendall to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kendall and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to adopt the ordinance. Is there a further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 26, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 26, 2018. Ordinance changing the zoning of 8.015 acres, part of in lot 9891 in the city of Troy, Ohio, from the zoning of R3B, Single Family Residential District, to the zoning of AR, Agricultural Residential District, and repealing ordinance number O. 9, 2018. This has been recommended by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the second reading.
And this will go to a third reading and to our committee, which is the Community and Economic Development Committee, correct?
Yes, yes.
And so, they will be setting a meeting. Has a meeting been set on that yet, Mrs. Knight?
I had not heard from the committee if they have a date yet. So perhaps we could set that before, at the end of tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 27, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 27, 2018. Ordinance authorizing use of public areas for the 2018 Tour de Donut event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordinances, and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Rocket Ship Sports, Inc., therefore, this event will be held August 24, 2018. This would be the second reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
We're going to suspend the rules on that ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Yeah, I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Heath to adopt the ordinance. Is there a further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 28, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 28, 2018. Ordinance authorizing the use of public areas for the 2018 Donut Jam event, notwithstanding conflicting provisions of the Troy Codified Ordinances and further approving the use of an area for the sale of beer and wine, subject to the issuance of proper permits by the state of Ohio and procurement of liquor liability insurance and authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with Troy Main Street, Inc., therefore, dates also August 24, 2015, 2018. This is the second reading.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Heath and seconded by Mr. Schwizer to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Phillips to adopt the ordinance. Is there a further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Mrs. Knight, please read Ordinance O. 29, 2018.
Ordinance number O. 29, 2018. An ordinance repealing Chapter 919 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, and enacting new Chapter 919 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Troy, Ohio, regarding solid waste service. This is the ordinance that does freeze the rate increases for the next three years. It has the elimination of requirement to purchase teabags, and it does other ordinance language cleanup. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend. Yeah, I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Severt and seconded by Mr. Heath to suspend the rules. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Schwizer and seconded by Mr. Severt to adopt the ordinance. Is there a further discussion from council? Mrs. Knight, just one point of clarification. When you read that, I thought you said to set the rates for the next three years.
I said that includes freezing them for the next three years.
Okay, okay.
And they are set for five.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to verify that. Any other comments from council? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Schwizer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Mr. Lutz?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Severt?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
That completes the business portion of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
No, there are not.
Mayor Beamish, do you have any comments this evening?
Just a couple. First of all, I see Stan Kegel, he's in the audience, or he was. There he is, back there. He's a participant in the Mid-County Church of, church that we all know, Mid-County. And this day, one of the hottest days, the most humid day, he had a youth group out there at Treasure Island Community Park. And their project was a service project, to give a community service back to the community. And they're getting ready for the, as we all know, the Riverfront River Fest that's going to take place Saturday. And they were out there in large numbers, the youth group. And I just thought that was really powerful to see, that they came out early, stayed late, and worked hard. And the weather conditions were not conducive, but they were there. And so, I would like to thank Stan and ask him to pass that on to the youth group and Michael, their youth pastor, for his and their effort. The second thing is just, I know we passed legislation with Tour de Donut and the Donut Jam. But as I previously stated, I just want people to know, I'm so passionate and supportive of this community. And over those 15 years, I think I've proven to be a team player in all those many events that this community has provided for all citizens of all ages. And I'm a big supporter of that. But saying that, I also, you all know how passionate I am and avid of family, a family value supporter, of family, good family values. I think in the world today, we need more of those, strength in family values. Most of the time, things go hand in hand. When it comes to supporting those events, and I, believe me, I've carefully and prayerfully considered my position. You all know my positions when it comes to alcohol in family oriented and public events. But I want you to know, I've always supported this council and this community and put aside my personal beliefs and preferences. So obviously, I wouldn't exercise my privilege of veto, but I will tell you, as I've done before, I don't plan to sign those two pieces of legislation so that people can respect my position as well. And I hope you will as well. So it'll just, it'll take a little longer to become enacted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Titterington, do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have July 4 coming up on Wednesday, 4th of July. There is no change in the trash and recycling pickup. That's item number one. Number two, Mrs. Baker, Mr. Kendall, Mr. Twilliger, Assistant Engineer Christie Butera, and I attended a public meeting at the library on Wednesday night with the group of residents. It was citywide, but primarily it was in the Finsbury, Sherwood, Kidderditch area. And they wanted to discuss the status of the referendum, but also talk about future plans and planning for stormwater improvements related to the Kidderditch. So briefly, I just wanted to make sure that council was all on the same page because all could not be there, given sunshine laws and probably other obligations as well. That Christie and I presented to the group Frank Harlow, who is the developer of some property, is the owner of the property Nottingham Drive that was the subject of the referendum, but also is the developer of Halifax and is looking to provide some further development north and east of the Fire Station 2 in that area. They asked for an update on what our plans might be in the future for the Kidderditch. So by way of background, for the council, in 2016, you authorized the staff to bid out a, with an engineering firm to do a stormwater master plan. That was about a nine-month process. At the end of 2017, the engineer identified 16 different projects. After thoroughly mapping and analyzing and doing everything that they need to do from a technical standpoint to understand our system, where the weak points are, where we needed to make improvements, they came up with 16 different projects. The number-one priority project is the Kidderditch, primarily from, and the most expensive part being from North Market Street, east and south to Skylark. Addressing the entire section of ditch is important. There are four different projects that identify the Kidderditch. The other three are minor maintenance-type projects. The main one is that area that I mentioned. At the time of the engineer's report, At the time of the engineer's report, they identified the estimated project cost at a minimum of $1.2 million. That does not include any cleanup of the ditch where there are obstructions and/or vegetation, particularly downstream of the Finsbury area. And I will pause to say that this was part of the presentation that we gave to the Finsbury group. And so I'm just kind of repeating to everybody what we told them. The takeaways, hopefully, were that the Kidderditch is our number-one priority, that we've already begun looking and doing some preliminary design work related to the Kidderditch. It is not only an expensive project, and so we are reviewing the impact of that project as well as the other $10 million worth of projects in the other 15 projects that I mentioned, and how those will be financed and over what period of time. And that it is a very complex project because of the fact that it is a regional tributary as it relates to our stormwater system. And so it's not something that's going to be solved overnight. There are some other entities at the state and/or federal level that will have to be involved in whatever we do with the Kidderditch. But there are some things that we may be able to start earlier than later, just as far as general cleanup. The final resolution, though, the larger project, is certainly something that's going to come back to council. It's going to be, have to be bid out, and it's probably going to be a multi-year effort. That having, that being said, Mr. Harlow did also make a presentation. He explained what he wants to do north of the Kidderditch and how the preliminary plans that he has submitted to staff include significant amount of oversizing of onsite retention and detention of his stormwater, stormwater that he needs to manage, not only on his property, but from the north of his property outside of town, because he does have a legal responsibility to make sure that he manages that and holds that water back so that it does not dump any faster or any, with any quicker than it does now as it's undeveloped. And so with all of those items and factors, those are the takeaways that we hope that they absorbed from that meeting. We did stay until we got kicked out of the library at 8:00. It was a two-hour meeting. Hopefully, the staff, as well as the council and the president, we tried to be accessible and hopefully it came across as being accessible and open to any suggestions. There were some sidebar conversations after the meeting, after the formal presentation to hear some of the concerns and answer some of the specific questions that the residents in the area had. I think that's all I have. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Other any questions on that from council members? Thank you. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber, any comments this evening?
I have no comments this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. City Auditor, Mr. Friggy.
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. I would like to express our thanks to the Mercer Group, Ted and Troy Mercer and their company for maintaining the flowers at the Troy Fountain Square, which look beautiful this summer, as well as their work on the Mercer Group Ball Field. And of course, they're also the impetus behind the Operation Courthouse and Operation Cloverleaf, along with several other partners that they have. They've been great community partners and their efforts are appreciated. Are there any comments from council members tonight?
Madam President, I just briefly have a quick one unrelated to legislation. Thank you. Troy Rotary is celebrating their 100th anniversary this year. And as a sort of gift to the, to the community, we talked about things that we could do and with Patrick's input and Aubrey Hale's input, we've put together a concert that will occur July 4th at Treasure Island. It's the McCartney Project, which is a Beatles, Paul McCartney Wings band. Kami Welker walked up. Some of you might know she did the Strawberry Festival music. She was very instrumental in getting us this band. They come very highly praised. There's some videos, if you want to look them up, it's called McCartney Project. But that concert will be free. There will be no alcohol there. It'll be on the 4th of July at Treasure Island, 7:30, and it will end, it should end immediately with fireworks. So we'd like to extend an invitation to celebrate our 100th anniversary and provide that as a community event, so.
Will that be at the band show down there?
At the, is that what it's called? Yeah.
Amphitheater. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from council members this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Heath?
Go ahead.
I was out of state this past council meeting, so it may have already been touched on, but the Strawberry Festival, I think, was awesome this year. Weather was great. The staff and Chamber of Commerce did an awesome job. So thanks to everybody at the city that was involved as well. Food was good, there was music, the weather was great. So I've heard some Troy residents say, why do I stay away from that? There's too much traffic and all that, and you're really missing out. If that's the case, I would suggest getting back there. If you haven't been there in a few years, it's really, it was a blast. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Lutz?
Madam President, I have a comment and a question. The first comment is, I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate the three United Ways of Miami County coming together under one unified banner. I saw many people around this table at their announcement last week. One of the things that I've talked about with this group and now in the public is the institution of a 2-on-1 system, and that's going to be very pivotal to make that happen here in Miami County. My question is, I had a resident ask, with the new pedestrian crosswalk configuration at the square, are pedestrians assumed to stay in the refuge area? Question was, was that when traffic comes from both sides and they see a pedestrian, should both sides stop? Or should the farthest side from the pedestrian continue to go until they make the refuge area?
I don't think there's any hard and fast rule on that. It's really a judgment call by both the vehicle and the pedestrian. And I would say the judgment call is more important for the pedestrian, since they may be legally in the right, but, you know, physics being what they are, they're probably going to lose the battle. What we have seen is, just what I said, that it's a judgment call. If somebody is walking slowly, the far lane may continue to go through if they feel they can safely get through without impacting the pedestrian. We've seen some pedestrians that will stop. That's why the refuge islands are there, until they see the vehicle stop and then they will wave, you know, or they will acknowledge so that there's eye contact and they know they can continue on. As long as the pedestrian is in the crosswalk, legally, they have the right-of-way. But again, being ever so alert is most important.
And that goes for both lanes of travel when they're in the crosswalk?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know if motorists are being ticketed and at what point? Like if their pedestrian is in the first part of the crosswalk or the car is being ticketed from the other direction if they're not?
I'm not aware that anybody has been ticketed at this point. We can find that out and give you a report on it?
We have an officer in the audience. I didn't know.
Yeah, he's the detective, though.
Detective. I don't know if he wants to make any comment or not.
We can, I can find that out. I have not heard of any tickets being given for that.